Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda, we've got block grant applications, the town meeting warrant, and the fiscal year 19 budget. And here's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimble.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Mullen, would you like to do the honors? Pledge allegiance, flag.
In the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Next up, item number one, community announcements. I just wanted to say one thing briefly. I know some people came tonight thinking that we'd be discussing the cell tower, and I just want to note that while the cell tower is a topic throughout town, currently it's under the purview of the zoning board. So, the Board of Selectmen will be taking no action until it goes through the course of the zoning board. They are the ones that have the final say in it. And with regards to, as far as the zoning meetings and all that, I believe the next one coming up on that is February 6th. So, just stay tuned to the calendar. And again, the Board of Selectmen, I know some people on the board have written letters to the zoning board. I myself have attended the meetings, and it's something we're following throughout town, but as far as comments, the Board of Selectmen won't comment until it's done through the purview of the zoning board. Next up, we have minutes. Open session minutes of January 2nd are postponed. And on the agenda, the first item we have is the Community Opportunities Group with Wayne Dara for block grant application. Wayne?
Thank you. Wayne Dara, Community Opportunities Group, the town's community development block grant consultant. I have a sign-in sheet that I want to hand around today and get folks to sign up saying they were here. This is proof that we're discussing some of these topics in a public forum, which is necessary for the grant application. Just as a review of where we're at with the town's current CDBG activities, the town was funded under a joint application for fiscal year 16 with the town of Holbrook. We are nearly complete with that program. We have rehabbed nine units in Rockland under the FY16 grant. We also provided fuel assistance to over 50 families in Rockland with that grant. We're currently working on a final housing rehab project that will be completed under Rockland's portion of that grant. When we submitted in a joint application with Holbrook back under fiscal year 16, it was a strategic decision we made at the time to increase the town's competitiveness. Unfortunately, in doing that, we had to sit out the FY17 grant year. But the town is now eligible again, and there have been some changes made in the program that actually put Rockland in a much better competitive situation than it had been back in FY16. The Department of Housing and Community Development has changed their scoring criteria. In the past, they used to have a 35-point scale that they judged communities on, and they stated whether they were a CDF-1 community or a CDF-2 community. And Rockland was on the cusp. We were 26, which allowed us to go either way. But if you went CDF-1, you were less competitive because you would be competing against communities with need scores of 30 and 31, and you were starting off at a disadvantage from the get-go. They've now taken a different tact, and they have created a 10-point scale on which communities are placed or ranked based on the percentage of low and moderate income households they have. And on that scale, Rockland is an eight out of 10, which puts you in a very, very competitive position. So, from that point of view, I think we're already off to a good start with an FY18 The other change they made is, in the past, they had a community development strategy, which was a document that basically distilled all the town's planning documents into a seven-page description of the town's needs and strategies for meeting them. They've changed the CDS, and they've shortened it. We now have to cram all that information into three pages, which is good and bad. But just for discussion purposes, along with the sign-out sheet, I've included the list of the prioritized projects from the FY16 community development strategy, and I just wanted to kind of go over those with the board tonight and with those who are here to see if there are any comments or questions or additions they'd like to make. This isn't exactly the list that was in the 16. We had a meeting this afternoon in the senior center. We already received some comments on the last list, so this is an updated list. But the five areas I really would like to talk about are housing, economic development and downtown revitalization, infrastructure, community facilities, public social services, and then open space recreation and historic resources. Some of those areas are currently represented on the list of priority projects, some more than others, but I just wanted to see if the board had any questions or any comments.
Any questions from the board?
Specifically, the priorities?
This or either what's on the list or what's not on the list?
Sure. I have something I wanted to bring up. We just left our Reimagine Rockland Steering Committee meeting. Reimagine Rockland is in kind of a relatively new undertaking that came out of our 40R adoption at our last town meeting. Our 40R is to try to help us with our, meet our housing production plan goals, as well as help us revitalize the economic and downtown business side of Union Street. We're running into infrastructure barriers in regards to development, specifically water and sewer. We kind of have an attack for water. We're looking at some grants, and that might help. But I am the chairman of, or chairwoman, I guess, of the infrastructure subcommittee. My background, I think I've done some affordable housing work. I used to be the council to our planning department. Do a lot with CDBG, as well as I've worked in infrastructure. So, one of the things, when I was reading through some of the different information on what CDBG can be used for, that I was thinking about is, one of the barriers we're having with our development is our sewer. So, we're hitting our flow numbers on rainy days because we have a lot of people who have sub pumps connected into their sewers. And we can find out where those places are very inexpensively through smoke testing. It's done cheap. It's probably something we can fund out of our own sewer budget. But the problem is, is the cost to get those sub pumps out of the sewer and into the drain can be too much for homeowners. But what it would allow us to do is, the majority of our residents here, as you know, are low mod. We have a lot of low mod income. But by able, being, I'm wondering if we can put together some kind of project to fund that, because what it ultimately would do is it would reduce our flow numbers at the sewer treatment plant, and then allow us to develop without barriers to flow, because we'll be taking flow out when it rains, so we won't be meeting, so, because right now that's a huge barrier for us to develop affordable housing, as well as revitalize our downtown. And like I said, it's inexpensive to find these, very inexpensive. The more expensive part is getting people to reconnect that piece of infrastructure from their basement into the MS4 system, rather than from the basement into the sewer.
Under a housing rehab program, we could provide a deferred payment loan to low and moderate income homeowners to do that work, much like we would to finance a connection into the sewer system itself to abandon their septic system. We could do the same thing with a connection of their sub pump into the sewer system.
Could we do it as a public infrastructure project? Because I was looking at that. I think that would be more advantageous to the homeowners themselves.
We couldn't.
Why? And why is that?
In order to do an infrastructure project, you have to demonstrate that more than 51% of the beneficiaries
Yep.
will be low and moderate income.
Okay. So, if we can show that the housing production that we're going to produce would be, I mean, I think, what I'm saying is, the benefit would be community-wide.
Right. And community-wide, Rockland has 37.1% low and moderate income households.
Okay.
So, it doesn't meet that 51%
All right.
measurement, so you can't do something that is a town-wide benefit.
So, what if we were able to, for instance, through the smoke testing, geographically identify places that, because we'll be, we'll know exactly through that, when you do smoke testing, where the issues are. What if we could find specific neighborhoods that we think, you know, could potentially qualify?
Just by its definition, it's not a public infrastructure project because it's occurring on private property?
It's not. It's, we're plumbing something from the sewer to, so what we're asking, so we are going to put a pipe in the ground that comes from their property to our property.
Right. It goes across their property. Comes from their basement.
Yeah, into our property.
So, it's private, it's private property. We could finance the part from their house to their property line, much like we could a water line or a sewer line.
Well, depending upon how our ordinance is written, because in some communities, the communities actually own that pipe. I don't know. Do you guys know how our bylaw is written for that? I'll have to look. But in some communities, the bylaws, you actually own, the municipality owns that lateral, and in some communities, they own halfway, and in some communities, the people own all the way to the street. I just, I haven't looked at it, to be perfectly honest, but I'll take a peek. But if it stated that we own that lateral, if that's what it said, would that impact it at all?
No, because again, you, we're still looking at that 51%. The only way you could do infrastructure is either it's, as the way we did the sidewalks up here was part of a slum and blight survey that said they were insufficient. The other way you can do infrastructure, and we do do full-depth reconstruction of roads, including sewer and drainage and new water lines, all that sort of stuff, but you have to have a very specific situation where it's a, typically a neighborhood road, not a through road, where a majority of the folks on that road are low and moderate income, or you've got census data that says a particular
By the track, yeah.
track is more than 51%.
All right. So, it is doable, just a matter of getting it done. All right. I'll take a look at that, because like I said, that's, that is definitely a barrier that we've identified for production to meet. So, I think by getting that flow out, if we could, we would not only be helping the residents, you know, to correct a deficiency, but we'd also be potentially removing an obstacle that will allow us to produce more affordable housing, that will also allow us to produce economic development on Union Street, without having to go through millions of dollars' worth of permitting from our sewer side. So, for pretty short money, we could get huge benefits. So, I think it's worth looking into, if that's a possibility.
The other way we could approach this, if it was the concept of having deferred payment loan against the homeowners for rerouting a sub pump connection into the drainage system, then we could, the town could opt to make that portion of the work a grant as opposed to a loan. We currently, or in the past in our programs, we've done that with the money that has been spent on lead paint
Yep.
remediation.
Yep.
We've provided that to homeowners as a grant, as opposed to a loan. So, they may, you know, the lien that's placed against their property isn't, in many cases, isn't 100% of the assistance that they received. We could, you know, approaching this from a housing rehab standpoint, which would be a cleaner, simpler solution, we could opt to design the program so that that specific type of work would be a grant as opposed to a loan.
Then they may be more apt to go through with it
That's what I'm thinking.
As opposed to borrowing.
That's what I'm thinking.
Correct the problem.
Right. Exactly. I mean, I know you've got a compulsory sewer connection ordinance in town, and we've touched bases with a number of people who have been under order to connect, and they just, they haven't wanted to take on a loan from us. So, it's understandable. It's understandable.
Okay.
But I am assuming we're going to, right now, the concept is to go in, in this grant for additional housing rehab funds at a minimum, is my understanding of what we're, what we'd like to do, because we still have a waiting list. And the other thing I failed to mention earlier is, the other change DHCD made is, in the past, the town had to target its community development block grant funds, and we had a target area that was based mostly around the center here. They've done away with the targeting requirement. So, in the past, we were very frustrated when folks from Wyman Fields or the north end of Union Street, or, you know, Beach Hill or Summer Street would approach us about a project, and we weren't able to help them because they weren't in the target area, and they didn't have an emergency situation. That barrier is now lifted, and we can do housing rehab townwide. So, I'm anticipating that we'll have plenty of applications for this program, because there's some unmet need out there that we just couldn't get to the last time we had grant funds.
Is it going to be a sole application, Rockland only?
This would be Rockland only.
I'm supportive of housing rehab and a big affordable housing advocate, but I just feel like there might be better ways to use this, these funds to help more people, rather than target them towards individual homeowners. And I think we should spend some time looking at what some of our goals are, kind of just this one that sort of came in front of me in the past couple of days, to see if there might be another way to reach those. Like I said, I'm support, I understand that it's going to a good purpose, and I know that, you know, we want to make sure that people have safe, sanitary places to live. I'm completely supportive of that. But depending upon how much money we're talking about, I want to make sure that we are, we are impacting the most residents that we can, you know, with the budget.
The maximum grant award that the town would be eligible for is $800,000.
So, I don't know if I'm necessar, the other question I had, unrelated, when you did fuel assistance last year, was that in addition to lie heap, or is that for people who are not eligible for lie heap?
It was for people who didn't meet the income limits, which are lower
Low, yeah.
for lie heap, but they met our low and moderate income guidelines, or for individuals who used up their entire benefit before the heating season was over, so it was more of a supplemental program for them.
That's good. Okay, just wondering. I don't know. I guess that's just where I'm coming from. I mean, I understand the housing rehab piece, I do, but I just feel like maybe we can look at some of our other plans that we have going on and see if there might be another way to utilize it that...
How many are on the waiting list now, Wayne?
I'm sorry. I think it's on the order of 16.
And at $40,000 a clip, that could be
Yeah, I expect the program would be in the order of 20 to 22 units total.
The waiting list is, yeah, that's not town-wide anymore, though.
Right. So, we've got a number of
So, if this were to go town-wide, then my expectation is you would have more takers.
More demand than we could meet. And our plan is to reach out to individuals who were outside the previous target area and had submitted applications and were not eligible for assistance, reach out to them, let them know the program is now able to reach them and have them indicate to us that they're still interested. So, I expect demand will not be a problem for this program, should it be funded.
Any other, you had a question, Mike?
Yeah, I just have two really quick. First of all, one of the first questions I had when, like, I first read all this, Wayne, was, I mean, like, how does this, oh, you know, like, as Ms. Hall mentioned, we do have, like, a really, our strong, like, redevelopment, economic development effort uptown, and how this application could help that. And, you know, so then, like, I thought back to, I think, 2011, when, with your help, we got the grant to redo the ramp at the community center, like, and other, like, infrastructure things, and then I spent some time over the weekend going through the guidance on the DHC website, which really outlined the fact that in terms of public infrastructure and building opportunities, we really are limited, especially with that building, because the senior center moved out, and, you know, there are, like, some unknown questions as to the future occupants of that building. So, I understand that, but, I mean, like, if, in terms of the housing rehab component, that there could be the component also that Ms. Hall mentioned, you know, like, then we could maybe achieve both goals at the same time, if that could be a possibility. I just, you know, I'm partial to the, obviously, the entire town, but, you know, the downtown and stuff right now, and if there's any way we can, like, connect this effort into that a little more directly. But I also understand, like, the limitations you're working with in terms of the DHC requirement and the 51% threshold, so, that's all I have. So, anything you can do to help support, like everything Ms. Hall mentioned, but, great.
I don't know if there are any questions from the crowd, or questions from the board?
No, I think since the program's been established, we've been able to demonstrate that people in need, whether that was people who were in the target area originally, have benefit by having the funds available so they can go through and pursue improvements. And at the same time, and I know you had the on and signage program a little ways back, and that also improved, you know, some of the aesthetics of downtown. So, I mean, each piece is a small piece, and there never seems to be enough funding to take care of it all. That's why we keep coming back, obviously.
Exactly.
But anything, first step in the right direction is something that's much needed, so I'm happy that we're actually going to be doing this one slowly, as opposed to doing it with Holbrook. And I know before, because the way the, we'll say, the funding and applications were, that it was the only way we could try to get something out of it. But hopefully, we will be successful again, and that'll be a benefit to the residents and the businesses, so.
Yeah. As I said, I think the rule changes that have occurred since the last time we applied definitely are beneficial to the town and its funding opportunities. So, I think we're in a good position to be competitive for this funding round.
When's the application due?
It's due on March 2nd. We've got a public hearing on it
February 6th.
February 6th. Will be the public hearing on the application.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we need to open the annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Chaka?
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion by some member of the board to open the annual town meeting warrant. Articles can be submitted to the Selectmen's office, and that warrant would close at noon time on March 10th.
Make a motion. Second? All those in favor? Let's vote. Thank you.
We will send out notification, all departments, for the procedure. Typically, what happens, and I know we had one incident last year where we almost missed the school department's articles. Sue sends back a received or confirmed that we got your articles. So, we will try and emphasize that again in our distribution. So, everything comes to Selectmen's. We send one back saying that we received it, and then you know it's then on us. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna, I don't want to step on your time, Mr. Chairman. Next item?
Next item was the fiscal year 19 budget proposal. But before we get into that, Eric, I just wanted to mention that Mr. Ryan wasn't feeling well, and I forgot to mention that at the beginning of the meeting, and he won't be joining us tonight, and we wish him a speedy recovery. So, with that...
Mr. Chairman, every year, we have to begin the process, now Eric and I begin the process with all departments, sometime around September or early October, in asking them to start to develop their early budget proposals. And then, we put together basically a small, and it's a draft, I shouldn't say small, but a draft budget. We've met numerous times. We've met with different departments. We've repeatedly asked them for their submission, and this is a submission so that the finance committee can begin its work. We don't know exactly what the revenues are going to be yet, so we do, we're very conservative, both in what the revenues are and in our appropriation numbers. We take a very conservative view, and by that, I mean, we make sure we have what we believe will be adequate funding. I don't want anyone to take this presentation as the gospel as to what will be at town meeting. So, as we work through that, I want to thank Eric, who I think I mentioned at a previous meeting has been, and we want to congratulate him, is the, what is it, Plymouth County and Norfolk County?
Plymouth, Norfolk, Bristol County
President of the Accountant Association. President of the Accountant Association. So, I think it says a lot for his credibility. Not only that, and he has been extremely helpful. As you know, the accountant and the financial team, which was small over to Southfield, recently changed, and they asked the town of Rockland, specifically Eric, if he could come over and help out, square the books away during the interim, and I've received a number of thanks from everyone over at Southfield for Eric's work. So, here and there, I may interrupt Eric's presentation, but...
Eric Cock, town accountant, and as Alan had said, this is extremely preliminary. The state has released almost no information as to where they are right now. I know at the MMA meeting coming up, typically, the governor will give us some preliminary numbers, but at this point in time, we've got no indication, and typically, we get some sort of news out of the state at this point. Also, as far as the estimated revenues locally, too, as well, we normally will be getting a large commitment for motor vehicle excise coming up shortly, and we have yet to see that either. So, those are a couple of the biggies that affected, so. Moving forward, I've worked with Alan on this here, as he said closely. Michael Loughlin has sat in with us as well, and I know you've all had a chance to take a look at the more detailed spreadsheet that I sent out. I've got some questions back from you and answered them, and I hope that, I hope if you have any other questions tonight, feel free to ask me. The highlights so far on the 19 budget that I've seen are, we've got $820,000 as the proposition two and a half increases. That's just a straight calculation of the prior year's levy. We're estimating, just as a placeholder right now, $250,000 for new growth. Last year was $307,000. This can be a volatile number. Typically, it doesn't increase that much, and we're quite a ways away before we're going to see much growth over at Southfield, from what I've seen from being over there. There's zero money coming in, in additional local receipts, as I mentioned, motor vehicle excise right now. We don't have the new commitments, so to take a stab at it at this point would be a little premature. As far as appropriations are being considered here, you know that you're negotiating union contracts right now, so you will not see any of that reflected in the budgets. There are some of the department head positions that have been negotiating contracts that are moving forward, and those are reflected in here. The facilities director position is no longer in the budget. The utilities department, I would say, on the facilities director, I still think that we have a need for it, but for the purposes at this point, we're not moving forward. We obviously want to send what, a somewhat balanced budget down. We're being conservative in our revenue estimates, so I think there's a desperate need for it, but it may not be the priority this year. Utility department has had zero increases now for several years. I took a look over the past five years historically in the state, and we've had increases of 17.3% over those five years, so that saved the town quite a bit of money on a half-million-dollar budget. The school split at the 70/30 split, where they get the 70% right now, they're, it only reflects $279,000, but as I said, there's limited increases. Basically, it's the $1 million at the top of the sheet here that you see, and that's reflective of this after the adjustments that we make for increases in debt and retirement and those type of items. Healthcare. And this does not reflect, like I said, the state increases, which I'm sure we're going to get something, we just have got no idea from the state at this point in time, northern motor vehicle. Fire police are contracting now with Holbrook for a new department, its own separate department called Dispatch for $350,000. The fire department had asked for four men. In this budget here, there is two shown. He's trying to put one man on per each of the shifts, so that he can send two people out on the second ambulance. The police are, also, we're removing the dispatch line item from the police department as well. They are requiring additional funds for maintenance of the building. I'm going to go through each of these specifically more in detail as we move forward. These are just the highlights to keep in mind as we're going forward. The highway increase of $75,000, materials and hired equipment. If you remember, we've been trying to get them to the point where they have a half-a-million dollars in general fund money to match up with the chapter 90 money, so that they can keep up on our roads. We've done a fantastic job on the new highway director superintendent, excuse me, on repairing the roads with the monies that we have currently, and we're hoping to keep that up going forward. He did ask for one additional man that is in there. Waste collection is awaiting negotiations on collection and disposal contracts. It's my understanding that the disposal contract is going to dramatically increase It's my understanding that the disposal contract is going to dramatically increase. I was looking at the numbers today with the department head, and she showed us that they're going from $2 a ton to $38 a ton, and that's an incredible increase, so we're hoping that that's temporary.
Is that just for solid waste, or is it also, is that recycling?
It's not recycling.
It's not recycling?
Yeah, that's the larger of the numbers, so. Youth commission increase of $11,000. I had a chance to really tear this apart with the youth commission's department head, and taking a look at their budget, what they take in through, are there other funds? And $11,000 will perpetuate that out almost indefinitely based on what their current programs are right now. The drainage enterprise fund, I know that this is something that the states have been looking forward to moving towards, and this particular budget in front of you has a $50,000 department for drainage, and, you know, we talked about it, and we can't put in a drainage enterprise fund currently. We would have to bring that before town meeting. This is something we'll discuss, Alan and I, with the finance committee, and I'm sure further with your board as well, on moving that forward. Having its own separate enterprise fund also means that these are completely additional fees on top of the taxes. Park department needs increases to maintain the new building that will be built. We sat with them recently on the building and to make sure that the project is on track. I know they came in kind of high on the building, and after speaking with Alan on that, we made sure that the, you know, the main focus is the Bethan Stadium on that. State assessment reflects minimal increase of about 5% on charter schools and school teacher retirement at the state level. Outside of that, the rest of it was level. Retirement increase of 8%, we're still waiting on Plymouth County to give us numbers on that. Health insurance increased right now, we're estimating a 4% increase, we're waiting on our projections.
And this is one place where, and I don't want anybody to panic with the final numbers on the budget, this is certainly, health insurance is 10% of our total budget. We're spending in the vicinity of $6 million a year on health insurance. This is an area where last year we saved over $400,000 by getting out of the Mayflower group and going out on our own. And we would have saved $800,000 had we dropped or changed the benefit levels as Mayflower did to their people, but we promised our employees that we would do the best we could to maintain the current level of coverage without increased deductibles and increased co-pay. So we maintained the system and saved $400,000. I believe this number, for example, may come down, not go up, and I expect it by comparison, Mayflower will be up over 10% this year. So number one, that was a great move for us, getting out of Mayflower again, and it's going to reap benefits for the town. But as we're looking at, and I'm sure the school panicked because we're talking about $280,000 increase in the school budget, this is certainly a place where the numbers will probably change, and again, to the benefit of the town, 4% may be high.
Alan and I met with the insurance agent, and we'll be meeting again. He'll present a little bit more harder numbers of where we are. Right now, we're just plugging in 5% as an estimate on the increase in liability. This is an overview of the estimated revenues and the proposed appropriations. You've got 66, 521, 266 in revenue and transfers in at this point in time. I've gone over a little bit of the numbers previously, and then on the proposed appropriations, you've got 66,795. We are upside down about a quarter of a million dollars roughly, but it's, that's a small amount of money in this considering the fact that we're very conservative on our revenues right now. This is a pie chart that demonstrates basically where it is your revenues are coming from. As you can see, the majority of the revenue comes from property taxes. Our local receipts represent 10%, and the state does a very large proportion of it as well, about a quarter of our funding comes from them. You've got an equal split of 4% of our revenue from water and sewer. They are in their own funds and do not, they not interact very much with the town as far as us contributing to them or vice versa, except they do pay us for certain administrative costs on top of what they spend in their own funds. As far as where your money is going out, education expense, direct expenses are 41%. Public safety is 11, public works 13. And then on the other side, you'll see the retirement health benefits are 16% and state county assessments. A lot of those, as well as the debt, portions of those are attributable to the education, which is where we end up with the 70-30 split when you take those two into consideration. On your appropriations, there are different sections that it's broken out into. These are various sections that the department revenue has seen fit to kind of lump them together. Your administration area of the appropriations are $2.5 million, and these are detailed out as the numbers that you've seen in the spreadsheet that I had sent out to all of you ahead of time. Very little increase in the administrative area right now because we're waiting on the contracts to be settled. There is an increase in election costs with an additional election coming up next year. Alan's may be aware that there's also possibly one that we may not have put in, so we're going to meet with the clerk and make sure that we've got that all covered. Public safety, the thing that I've always found that this is interesting, that all of the inspectors are all part of the public safety, keeping the public safe. And one thing that I thought was odd was the tree department has been so seen by the department of revenue to put in this section here. I don't know whether that was because they were clearing trees that were, I think, threats, I believe, to the town is mainly what the focus was of that. As I had mentioned previously, you can see the third line down, Dispatch will be its own separate department, $350,000, participating with Holbrook who's hosting it. And as I had said previously, that the department, the fire department is looking for additional men in this proposed budget here. We have two. The tree department was also looking to add one man, that is not reflected currently in this budget. It does include about $10,000, so in additional hired equipment for that department. For public education, they've asked us this year in the splitting of revenue to split out regional schools per their request. I'm going to list that out separately here, and we'll be presenting that down to the finance committee as such. I believe the selectmen have agreed along with Alan to present it as they had requested. As you know, the $280,000 that I had mentioned previously is a very low estimate on what they're going to be getting. We'll expect that number to increase quite a bit. School committee is working also on a feasibility study for the new elementary school. We paid for that feasibility study last year out of free cash. For the public works department, $8 million. And here, the highway department, as I said, was looking for two men to work, also to work towards the $500,000 goal. In this, it reflects one man and $75,000 added to the highway budget. That combined with the $10,000 is approximately where we were at, you know, in the tree department, to get them to what we had agreed to, to try and move them to the $500,000 per year. The drainage repair was added as a new department to start addressing the increased regulations on stormwater testing and control. I expect this to bloom into something much larger as we head forward, and appreciate that we have Deidre on the board, who's got some expertise in the area on that. The collection disposal contracts, as I mentioned, are going to increase quite a bit if what I saw is going to come to fruition. Already, as I have the budget presented before you with what they've requested versus the revenues out, we're already in about a $75,000 deficit looking into 19, so they will have to increase their rates in order to cover their expenditures. In speaking with Alan, he suggested that we also consider having them cover the health department's expenses as they handle it. In this lump together here are the human resources and the culture and recreation area, which includes the health department, visiting nurses, council on aging, youth commission, veterans, the small celebrations, library, park department, and historical commission. The increases here are typically contractual increases with the exception of the youth commission, where I explained about the $11,000 perpetually forward. And the park will be looking to maintain that new building and have some utility costs associated with that. Your debt is 3.5 million roughly here, and you'll notice that I've split out in the debt area here after working with the treasurer and the water department in both this example here and in the water department budget, where it's segregated out, to show the principle for debt that is excluded and not excluded, so we can better, keep a better track on what it is that's going to be added into the taxes each year for the payments. There's a reserve of bond premiums down below. Anytime we issue bonds and we get a large premium on it, we are required by the department of revenue to set that aside and then amortize that over the loan's life. This does not reflect some new debt which will be coming up that you should be aware of. We have yet to get the debt for the library roof of $147,000, the Veterans Memorial Stadium for $1.6 million, the remainder of the road project for 6.5. We're not sure if we'll need the George Street drainage, but it was approved. Future estimates on these payments towards these loans here, and I'll be working with Alan, the board, and the treasury in order to secure these long-term bonds. I'm expecting the payments to be somewhere around $680,000 a year, of which $175,000 will not be excluded and will have to be absorbed within the town's funds each year. State assessments, 3.9 million. All I've done is increase the amounts for the retired health insurance for the teachers and the charter school spending tuition, because I've seen them go up statistically each year, and the other ones are kind of smaller. I'll wait until we get more secure numbers on those items. Appropriations for retirement and health are also, on the retirement contributions, excuse me, one second. We did increase these here. I was cooking along there too. On the retirement contributions, that's gone up $265,000. I believe that was 8% that it said on that. The health insurance was 4% at an increase of $300,000 there. Unemployment increased by $5,000. Medicare is level funded, and liabilities insurance went up 5%. So the total estimated revenues are 66,521, 266. The appropriations are 66,795, A-12, and the projected deficit right now is 274,546. Again, I warn you that this is extremely preliminary numbers here. You're required by our charter to send something down to the finance committee. Typically, the finance committee, when they get this, they go back to pretty much zero base budgeting. They go back, they look at the level funding for the previous year, what are the calculated costs for each of the departments? They typically get on a breakdown. We request it in our department when they, when they send it forward, that they send Alan and I a breakdown of their payroll by person for each of the departments so that we can check that against the contracts for each department, and then justify any increases for items that they're asking for. We add in what you've negotiated for contractual obligations, then we go back and take a look at, well, what was the board of selectmen's directions that they were sending us in, and try and fit those into any additional funds that we may possibly have after doing the contractual obligations. So they do keep what the board has in mind on what the directions are, and I sit with them through the whole process. Alan comes down quite often as well, and we try and keep them on that track going forward. We've been working with them now for, I've been here 13 years, and it's been working very well, so. I just need a vote to pass this on to the finance committee if anybody wants to so move, or if you have any additional questions, I'll entertain them.
Questions from board? Question?
Oh, just one additional one. Thank you, Eric, for answering all the questions I had earlier as well. I just, oh, this is an easy one, but in terms of the $0 increase, like in the local receipts, like you mentioned that last year there was $120,000 increase. Do you, oh, my question, how does that typically trend? I mean, like, I noticed on the revenues, like the meals attacks, the hotel taxes are level funded, that does that? I mean, like, has it reached a kind of the plateau, do you think, or can we?
You know, I really don't know, and we're only five months into it right now. I typically do a run on historical comparisons that show from year to year, if, I think I've got five months in right now, what that looks like. There was nothing that flagged out that would be something that I feel comfortable using just five months of information on, quite frankly. We've got quite a ways before town meeting comes up, and as the new money frees up, we've got an idea of, you know, what the priorities are from, you know, what you've told us, where you're looking at for different, you know, items that are important to you, and throughout the process, you know, I look for more feedback from you on some of the, you know, requests from the departments, and with that, as I sit with the finance committee, you know, Alan and I will try and keep it focused in those different areas. I'm assuming with most of the items that were requested, those have been the items you've been talking about all along, pretty much between all of you. And so that's what we're trying to keep in mind with what we've done here, without going too crazy. Typically, everybody asks for this, they end up about here, you know, and passing it on to the finance committee, and, you know, maybe we'll have, you know, as we move forward, maybe the state's going to come through with fantastic numbers and we can fit all the requests in, you know, maybe not. One of the things we do ask though is that, you know, free cash when that gets certified or any other one-time funding does not get used for these type of items. That's for capital items only, and I fight tooth and nail over that one with any department that tries to cross over that line, you know, so. That's always been a, you know, kind of the mantra of the administration, you know, and Alan's helped me out a lot in holding my line on that stuff, because, you know, you get pushback from various departments that want to use those type of funding, and it's not a safe move. That's what put us into problems a long time ago, you know, with negative free cash when Alan locked in the door, and, you know, I finally had a town administrator that would help out with holding line on the finance of the town.
We were on DOR's list, basically probation list. We had submittals that we had to make in certain timeframes and timelines, and they were, for lack of a better term, they were down our throat all the time because of the financial situation the town had gotten itself into. Now, it did take us four or five years to just get back to even, and the last four or five years have been substantially better. Our approach, Eric and I, along with the board, previous boards, has been conservative estimate on revenue, make sure that we have enough money because for those appropriations we have to make, we can make the adjustments. And I can't thank the finance committees over the past few years. Their cooperation through this whole process has been phenomenal. From the time I came in, we all wanted to turn the Titanic around in the bathtub that we had. Limited funds, no ability to make any adjustments, limited ability to make any expenditures, but it took, it took the cooperation of all the departments and certainly the finance committee, working with us and us with them to say, this is where we want to go and how do we get there. Now, if you remember, we had no money in our stabilization account, and we're quickly approaching 3% of our levy limit. I think we're probably only $200,000 short, which I had always hoped to have done by my 10th year here, and it looks like I think this year we'll be able to get that. We do have a couple of things looking. I would love to get to four extra men for the fire department. We've already built in two on a conservative budget. We might be able to change that. Stormwater was something we haven't had to deal with. We're starting to build a response slowly with that and working with the sewer department. We've also, we may have the ability to go self-insured within a year or two with the kind of savings we're realizing in our health insurance, so. We've got a number of things looking forward. I'm really sacrificing. I don't think it's necessarily the right thing to do in it. I may not give up the ghost yet. Depends where we go after the state funds and local aid come. I truly need to think that the big need for the town next is a unified facilities director for all of your buildings so that there is a scheduled preventative maintenance program. for all of your buildings, so that there is a scheduled preventative maintenance program from sprinklers to burners to roofs, to everything that we do with all of our buildings, so that your buildings last longer. We'll save money, the town of Rockland would save money in the long run by spending a little in that particular area. Buildings won't deteriorate as fast. So we're doing a lot of things, and we're doing it in a very conservative fashion. So I'm thrilled with where we've gotten. Local aid, I expect, will go up. We're not overestimating. Receipts, I expect, will go up. We're not overestimating. I expect some of the costs we put in here actually to come down, but we have to, six months ahead of town meeting.
Give them something.
Be conservative. We do need a vote of the board so we can forward a blueprint.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a number of high school students here. I think they came back after meeting with me for close to an hour the other day. They're doing a tutorial on government, town government, and how it works. So their assignment this week was to read the town charter, to come to this meeting and listen to the budget presentation. I want to thank you guys for coming.
I do.
And I'm sure we'll get you to a couple more exciting board of selectment meetings.
It's a privilege.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman.
We must move right on to the town administrators' report correspondence.
I have to work my way back to my desk. Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have in your, in my comments tonight, and it came in late on Friday, I know we'll all be excited, is we had applied for a grant through the ADA, it's an ADA improvement grant, trying to bring our buildings into further compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Included in that was a matching bid. We requested $79,000, and we offered to, almost 80, we offered to contribute $39,923 towards that grant, and we were awarded the entire grant for a total estimate of the projects to be $118,923. And we are very excited over the fact that this will really take care of, as Deirdre calls them, our tier-one ADA requirements. But here at town hall, at the library, at the police station, there'll be some changes made in the counters in order to facilitate easier access for some of the handicap, whether it's wheelchair or whatever, lever door handles rather than the old twist ones. The largest piece of this was an elevator repair, which, by the way, we received the grant on Friday, and this morning when we came in, the elevator's not working. So we have already started today. We got right on the phone with, Marcy did a great job working with the awarding authority here to tell him that we really need to get moving on this. And he said, if you get the contract signed and up to me, we'll approve you to start right now. We received approval today, probably about 3:00. We awarded the contract this afternoon. In anticipation of this grant, we had bid, a provisional bid for the elevator contract, so that we had it, had it ready. If we got the grant, we could award it. We opened those bids last week, and we awarded it today, so. And I called them to say, look, you're going to get the contract, signed contract in your office tomorrow, but can you order the pads today? We're really trying to fast-track the elevator repairs. We do have other things to do in the future. We'll be going for additional grants in the future, but I think that's great that the town of Rockland's going to get about $120,000 worth of work for $40,000. And that's, sometimes it's the, it's just those accessible push-button doors. You see them at town hall now. I think we're putting them in at the polling stations, at the high school, at the Esten School. We're restriping some parking. We're doing the push-button accessible doors at the highway department, the police department. We're making improvements at library, so another job, another great opportunity. $120,000 worth of work for $40,000. I'll do that all day long. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Selectmen's comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all of the board of selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. For that, Mr. Loughlin.
Thank you. This Friday morning, I'll be meeting with a realtor on the South Shore, at the Rockland Chamber of Commerce, South Shore Chamber of Commerce, about the perception that real estate developers have of the downtown area in Rockland. We're going to go through with members of the South Shore and Rockland Chamber, any barriers that might be standing in our way as far as redevelopment goes in Reimagine Rockland. That's it.
Thank you, and good luck Friday. Ms. Hall.
Thanks. So I have two things. The first is, on February 16th, the teen center's going to be having a Valentine's Day dance, and they're looking for volunteers. Please, please, please contact me for volunteers, or contact town hall, or contact the teen center. We really need volunteers. This is something that the kids are looking forward to, and we definitely need parents at the dance. The next issue I wanted to mention is, we had our first working group meeting on the NIP issue. It was attended by only two of our licensees, which I was a little bit disappointed by. I will reach out to the ones, other three, I believe, who were not there. But we did make some headway on short-term goals, medium-term goals and long-term goals, specifically with some coordination with Reimagine Rockland on an anti-litter campaign. So I think that they dovetail nicely. And our next meeting is, I believe, I was just trying to check, next month, the 15th on a Thursday, February 15th at 3:00. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin.
For the sake of sounding like a little bit like Larry Ryan, because he's not here, I was, Saturday morning, I was, I was out on a drive to kind of, it rained the day and night before, and I expected there was some flooding around town, so I took a little drive in my little Ford Focus on my coffee run, and low and behold, there was some, like a lot of areas of flooding. And so I actually, I got on the phone, I texted Ms. Hall, and I told her where one of those areas were, up in Wyman Field, and 15 minutes later, we met. She got in touch with Dave Taylor, the highway superintendent, and a few minutes after that, Dave and John Loughlin from the sewer department were down with a few other guys from the highway department, and really helped alleviate, like, a bunch of issues for some folks, like in the Moncrief Road, Josh Gray Road area. If that wasn't enough, I went home, but there was also an issue up in Millbrook, and Deirdre, and it was just amazing, I mean, like, she spent the whole day, basically, up in Millbrook, you know, like, using her experience, which we talked about last week, we talked about tonight, but I just, I'm sure, like, it was really valuable for the homeowners up there and for the homeowners everywhere in town, but, you know, so thank you, Deirdre, thank you to Dave Taylor, the highway department guys, and John Loughlin, and everyone from the sewer department as well. We had some localized flooding areas, but as far as I know, they've all been remediated and addressed, and so job well done on a cold weekend day, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, I had received that same phone call from Deirdre on Saturday to give me an update, which I appreciate, and I think my response was, I don't think people realize how powerful Mother Nature can be with water, and it was unseasonable for us to get so much rain after such a large snow and the melt. And actually going by St. Lee Pond, Reed's Pond, the pond was quite elevated, and it was good news to see it when I went by again a day later that it had receded slightly, and again, it's receded again. So as long as the weather holds off, we should be okay. But again, other parts of the country have experienced that. I mean, we haven't had the hurricanes or the wildfires and the mudslides, so as much as water can be problematic, in the overall scheme of things, what we experienced, and not to try to downplay anyone's personal, let's say, issues with the water, because flooding can be, can wreak havoc on a household, but it was heavy rain, and the rain, you know, has stopped, and we're able to have, you know, based on the work that we had done year prior down on that, we'll say, Wyman Field area, I mean, that alleviated. Had we not done that work and gone through and changed some of these drainage things, we would have been looking at something much more severe. So, again, trying to be proactive, trying to get things done, you know, by SOR and highway department, I say kudos to those people. But again, it all comes back to funding. As you've seen tonight in the preliminary budget, we added another person to highway, we added some more materials, and again, when these things come on on town meeting floor, we need these other people to come out and support these budget requests. Because in the past, some people just look at the cost of the budget, and they say, oh my God, the budget's gone up, why do they need another guy? But they don't understand that it's all this stuff that goes into it on an annual basis that when you have an event like this, it can make it more or less uneventful, or diminish or at least decrease the exposure we may have. And it's the same thing true whether it's police or fire and people. The town has grown, people want to have more response, the needs are greater, so we need to buy these services. But again, those services cost money. And as you heard tonight, it's looking like trash is going to go up. Now, we all pay for trash separately. Nobody wants to hear the fact that trash is going to go up, but maybe we have to start looking at other solutions. Maybe we have to look at, maybe partnering with another community so we can keep the costs down or impact out. Maybe we have to go back and renegotiate, or maybe we have to look at what we can do to possibly maybe do some more, we'll say, direct drop-off and things like that to try to keep the costs. But again, what's happened out there, there's more communities recycling, so there's more product on the market, and some of that stuff's not going overseas to be redone, so then we have to pay to get rid of it, and unfortunately, those costs get passed on to us, the consumer, in this case, us, the taxpayer. So when you start to think about things, I mean, they're all small steps that everyone's made so that we can go through and have more funding for schools, more funding for police, fire, library, parks, probably all those things. But again, the world we live in, people want to get paid more. Health insurance goes up, liability insurance goes up, the cost of providing, you know, materials and equipment, all those things go up as well. So, you know, globally, we have to take a look at what we can do to hopefully keep those costs down, but at the same time, I think the department heads, the employees, the town, everyone's demonstrated the fact that they're diligent about trying to save the taxpayer monies, but still provide the services that are required. I mean, and it was just evident again by, you know, you're out on a Saturday, department heads are out there, they don't have to be there, yet they're there responding, so that's a good thing, and, I mean, that's, you know, by living in Rockland, a lot of other people can say that. We take a lot of things for granted. I mean, there was a fire, you know, on the corner of Union Street, and again, fortunately, nobody was hurt, but again, somebody had to respond, someone had to go out in that cold, someone had to go out and put that fire out, so. A lot of things we take for granted until something happens to us, so we just have to be cognizant of that, and when it's budget time at town meeting floor, that, you know, these same people come out and support the budget and support town meeting and any of the articles that may be up there. So I just wanted to point that out. I just wanted to touch quickly a little bit on the cell tower issue. I know I spoke about it initially in the meeting, and there's been a lot of talk around town about use variance. And when we implemented the use variance, I just wanted to be clear for a lot of people at home, the premise behind implementing the use variance was not for any cell tower-type use. It was primarily to take distressed buildings or properties in town and look at those at a onesie-twosie-type basis so that we could go through and bring them back to life and bring back a use, and that's why the use variance was there, so that we could give those properties, or at least have the options to return those properties back on not only other tax rules, but restore them for the neighbors who are surrounding those properties, because we have a lot of distressed properties. I mean, if you take a look at the Estes property, you take a look at some other properties around town, I mean, almost in every neighborhood, there's a property, and that was the premise behind the use variance. Currently, you know, people have to understand whether that use variance is amended or changed in the future, because there's been talk around town about that. It's not going to change the outcome of the current proposal with the cell tower now, because that's under those rules. Whether that's successful or not, that's yet to be seen, and again, that's something that has to play out with the zoning board. And again, that's why we have a zoning board, that's why we have a planning board, that's why we have a conservation commission. That's the venue, and that's the forum for all that to be heard. And any of the neighbors, they can be, they can speak at those meetings, it's public, and I know some of us have attended those meetings, and I know some of us have actually spoken, you know, support, you know, position of some of the, we'll say, opponents with that particular thing. But again, it's not up to us to say yes or no. It's a zoning issue, and that's what those people on that board are for. So I just wanted to make that clear, and it's no reflection of this board or that board. That's just the way the charter's written, and that's the way our bylaws are, and that's how it has to go. So it's difficult, because sometimes a lot of people don't understand government until a particular issue affects them. I mean, we've had numerous issues that, you know, as issues arise, we try to, you know, find out what the problem is and try to take corrective action. And the only thing I would like to say, if the boards were out of Reed's Pond, you know, it may have been worse for the people downstream with that particular rain, with this event. So it's one of those things where we had talked about pushing that stuff down and making the, the problem just goes downstream. I know the boards are going to be taken out as soon as the state gets that, it's quite away with us. I know they're working with Alan's schedule on that, and again, until the weather improves, I don't think that's going to happen until probably the spring at this point, but it's just something to point out, that the people downstream, I'm sure they're, you know, they've suffered enough, and I don't think they need to have that rain now either. That's all I have for tonight, so I just want to remind people that we have a forecast for more snow. We do have an overnight parking ban for the winter, so please make sure your vehicles are off the road so that the highway department can do their job, and we will see you at our next meeting, which I believe is February 6th.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Myself. Thank you all, and have a good night.